Namaste, Sadhguru Deva Devi, Gauravani, Prichadani, Milosh, Krishna, Shaitanand, Dhanand, Shri Bhadav, Shiva Swati, Gaurav, Bhakta, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. I prepared some nice slides, those is easier, but by Krishna’s arrangements, we’ll maybe see it little later, so, I take question. Okay, so, we have been asked to speak on Kambaramayana. Now, all of you know Ramayana? And it’s a famous, nothing to introduce to you people of India, and nothing to introduce Ramayana too, but I’ve been asked to speak of Kambaramayana. Now, what is Kambaramayana? The great sage Valmiki, he heard from Narayana Munir Ramayana, actually by his blessing, Ram Dilah was revealed to the great sage Valmiki. This is the thing with Veric literature, it’s not that somebody composed it. It’s a big misunderstanding of the modern scientists and scholars and Indologists. They say that Yasadhar wrote this book, but this book is written by somebody. Vedas not really written in that way. The Vedas exist eternally, and they are revealed to the pure soul. When soul is pure enough, he hears the Vedas, he hears the mantras. You have Prigweda, Yajurukshama, Atarva, all the shakas of Vedas, all the mantras of Vedas are revealed to such riches who had enough purity to hear them. The origin of Ramayana has one billion shlokas, one billion shlokas, this many shlokas. And that is preserved in Swarga Loka, even today. Okay, I know this very interesting, this thing, but you know, if you sit here, it’s easier for me. Yeah, Hare Krishna. All right, so, Ramayana has one billion shlokas in Swarga Loka. Of that, not only summarizes and tells to Valmiki, Rivas Valmiki, twenty-four thousand shlokas. Now, twenty-four thousand shlokas is a lot of shlokas. Bhagavata has seven mantras shlokas, and we have, you know, struggling to read it, to memorize it, to understand it, you know. Twenty-four thousand shlokas, Bhagavatam has eighteen thousand, Ramayana has twenty-four thousand. So, now what happened? The most autorized and prominent, the main book is revealed to Valmiki, we call it Valmiki Ramayana. And that is for thousands of years present here, on the earth. Now, great sage Kamba. Kamba is a South Indian sage, you may say. He wanted to narrate Kambaramayana, he wanted to narrate Ramayana in Tamil language for the Southern people. So, he is basically declaring at the beginning of his work, that my work is based on Valmiki Ramayana. Valmiki revealed the Ram Dilah, and I’m following Valmiki. Now, that is true in main, in, that is what he says, I, my authority is Valmiki, by his mercy, I will be able also to narrate Ramayana. And the, in his Ramayana, his Tamil version of Ramayana, sometimes here and there stories new different. And that’s not because he changed the story, but because he seen it like that. The Lord Ram revealed to him some different potions, some different details which were covered up by Valmiki, or were not exposed by Valmiki, said. So, this is very interesting. So, this is not that this is different version, or that Kamba did something else, but actually to him, Lord Ram revealed Lila like that. Remember, the Lord Lila is a Nitya Lila. Ramayana is now going on in some universe, in some universe now, Ravana is getting killed by Ram. This is Nitya Lila also. So, here and there, sometimes patterns little different. Always Ravana is killed, don’t worry about that, that will not change. But here and there, some small details are changed. Now, the difference between Valmiki and Kamba is that, Valmiki is a great sadhu, devotee, rishi, pandit, and amazing writer, but Kamba is a poet. So, when you see the Kamba’s way of expressing something, everything is into metaphors, everything is in comparisons to the nature, everything is in very symbolic and very beautiful and mind-blowing way of expressing it. It’s really, I don’t know Tamil, okay? But even the worst of English translation is very amazing, very amazing version of Tamil. So, I don’t know, maybe some Tamil rishis can later on print directly from Tamil. Kambaramayana is a tough one, it’s not easy language, and it’s a one shloka and have two, three meanings, depends on meanings of the word. Then I’ll tell you something, something from the Ramayana read, just give you little background. So, people always say, “Valmiki Ramayana, Valmiki Ramayana,” but we know, we know it, we have Ram Charita Manas, or Tulsi Das, you know? It’s again Tulsi Das realization of the Ramayana, you may say, you know? So, in South, we have this Kambaramayana, Kambarish. So, when Kambarish, he brought his Ramayana in Tamil, for the benefit of people in Tamil language. History is complex, many things happened there. But Tamil language was very important into Vaishnavas to have Ramayana in Tamil, that was very important for all the Vaishnavas of South India. And the Kamba, when he brought Ramayana, the many Sanskrit pandits, Sri Vaishnavas, who knew Valmiki Ramayana, said, “We don’t need different version of Ramayana. We have Valmiki Ramayana, what’s the point having this? It’s not authorized, you’re changing the story,” and, you know, it was big commotion in Sri Lanka. So, the great rishis, all the pandits, they sat together and discussed whether this Kambaramayana is authorized or not. So, they brought it in front of deity of Nasingadhe in Sri Lanka. Even today, it is there. And it’s like this big deity of Nasingadhe, like this size. And they brought the Ramayana in front of Nasingadhe, and they asked, “Dear Lord, speak the page.” Half of the pandits are saying, “This is authorized, how is it not authorized? And Kamba is authorized, not authorized? Please, Lord, we can’t decide, tell us. Give us a sign. If it’s authorized, give us a sign.” And Lord Nasingadhe raises one hand, Murti raises one hand, “Authorized.” And today, Murti is holding hand like this, this is how the Murti is, today you can have Dachan in Sri Lanka, Nasingadhe, who put the stamp on Kambaramayana, “Authorized.” So, this is very amazing, what happened. So, the Kamba is a poet. Now, if you see the, okay, define the poet, because Kalihuga, when you say poet today, what does it mean? You know, means really something poor nowadays, you know? So, people still study Shakespeare, you know? If you see Kamba and Shakespeare, Shakespeare was uneducated person who couldn’t sign, he had to put a tongue blend, this is comparison, sorry to say, you know, glorious to Shakespeare, but his expressions are gross, unifying, and nothing to Kamba, you know? He’s really, 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 if you see the poetry of Kamba, that poetry is nothing, you know? What is today’s poetry? Today poetry is on WhatsApp. I saw you in the, I saw you in the Dubai mall, your eyes are black like a Rosa Tawa, and if you send me your phone, I’ll call you for dinner in Parata King, something like that. It’s gross, you know what I mean? Another poet who read, who read Kambaramayana, it’s a British fellow who read, and he said, “Oh, after reading Kamba, Shakespeare to me sounds like a praying of a donkey.” British fellow said, “I didn’t say,” you know? So, it goes really like that. Why? Because the Sanskrit and Tamil, the poetry has to be meter. You know, here, you stretch some words, you don’t stretch some words, how, how you like rap song poetries? You know, first you hear the beat, and somebody is murmuring with the beat, and unless you read the text, it’s very difficult to figure out what this man is saying. And even after reading it, it’s difficult to understand what’s the message, even for the author, you know? So, you understand, so, we are really speaking about high-class poetical expressions. Now, in Sanskrit, there are rules for poetical expression, you can’t just, you know, say it like this, if you say that the city of Dubai is very big, it’s large, it’s such a great city. Now, this is in Sanskrit fault, why you using two same words to describe, big and large, it’s a fault, you don’t know how to do, you not accept it. What we said, big, big city, that’s double fault, you know? So, you don’t know how to speak, it’s as simple, what is that? You’re uneducated, this is how it is considered. So, who is educated in Veric? First you study Sanskrit twelve years, you learn the nirukti, you can chakdas, you learn the language, then, the last thing you learn in Sanskrit is kavyas, poetry, that’s the highest. There’s so many rules, you can’t use this word for this word, you can’t do that, you can’t do that, you can’t say subject before the verb is given, and the verb, if it’s meaning something else, then you know, so many rules are there. So, even if you read, you not know what he actually did, how difficult is what he expressed. We are uneducated to understand what rules he followed, like pannin is grammar, what is the meaning, then from that pandits derive first meaning, second, it’s very complex, you know, it’s mind-blowing. And we are really uneducated, we are modern civilized men, twenty-third century, but we are, we are unable to read Kamba’s poetry, because we are uneducated, we can’t go get into the code, what is his meaning, you know? We need Acharya’s explanation, we need guidance, we need like a small children, ah, ah, we need finger by finger guidance from each shloka. And now, and so this is beauty of Kamba, it’s a mind-blowing, the way he expresses something is really, really varied, you know? Many people tried to translate his poetry, and it’s difficult. Some that tried to translate Kambaramayana into poetical way in English, didn’t work. I tell you one example, one Britisher, another British fellow, British people spend time in Tamil, so they picked up a little bit on the literature and language and this and that. So, one fellow is translating, the Kambaramayana uses Tamil words, and one of the, some, many words are Sanskrit words also. So, for ladies in the palace, they walk gracefully as a hamza. So, what you would translate? Ladies are walking gracefully as a swans. Correct. So, British fellow translated, ladies are walking gracefully in the palaces as a guses. The man is a graceful goose. You understand, you cannot ask somebody who is, and they publish the book, “Autorized Translation of Kambaramayana, Goose.” So, this heart to me, so you understand, so, it’s a, you know, this is really high class, everything, the world, and the, what is the highest thing? Now, you have all group of Tamilians, Tamil pandits, Tamil, Tamil, Tamil warrior, so, they are into the Tamil language, and they Tamil, Tamil, Tamil. So, what is, they glorify Kamba, look at this poetical, this poetical expression, and this, and this, and this, and this, they forgot what he is writing about. Don’t let this, they don’t speak about God. You are speaking how he writing, but I’m speaking what he is writing about. That message they are not getting, they are not getting, Ram is supreme, and it’s only, only purpose of writing that, because he is devotee, he wants for his fellows to understand, wrote it in Tamil and spoke, Ram is supreme, Ram is Bhagavan, we have to surrender to Ram, that’s the message. So, Kamba at the beginning of his Ramayana, he offers pranam to Valmiki, and he says, like this, okay, I’m reading authorized translation, there is no authorized translation, this is all, you know, surface translation of Kambaramayana, okay? He says like this, he offers praise to Ram, he chants Ram Nam, and he offer pranam to Valmiki, and he says, “I’m going to recite a spotless story of victory of Lord Ram,” and he says, “Being influenced by it,” means, you see, the Sanskrit word is being influenced by it, you can translate, being overwhelmed by it, being devotee of it, that’s what difference. And then he says, “Just as a cat, cat goes to the ocean of milk, cats, they like milk.” Okay, how much milk can a cat drink? So, I’m going, Kamba said, “Like a cat to ocean of milk, to drink it all, with all his waves.” So, means, he understood that this is something, unless Lord reveals, it’s not possible to do it. Nobody can describe Ram Dilah, you know? But look at the analogy, so this is how he speaks, “Just as a cat goes to ocean of milk, we decide to drink entirely with his high waves, I’m going to write Ramayana.” So, this is introduction, this is Kamba. And if you see in Tamil, you can sing it, meter is there, perfect, the words expressed, the words today, I asked devotees in Tamil Nadu to read him a few shlokas, and then in second sentence, there was one hour debate, what word means, because nobody knows these words, I mean, half of words are not there, you know? So, I say, “Come on, you’re Tamil person, you read Kambaramayana directly, you are somebody from Brahmin background.” So, I asked, we have few nice boys, Brahmin background, one was Smata background, one was Sri Vaishna background, they got stuck on third line, so, it’s about pattern, it’s difficult, it’s just different language. This is why they glorify Shakespeare, that Shakespearean language is better, more deep, more descriptive, you know, I tell you, that is how Shakespeare sings, zero, you know? Okay, you see, I can’t narrate your Ramayana, you are aware of that, you know? Eight, I take, we have, so we can’t go through Ramayana, just give you here, some expressions that he uses, huh? Is that okay? Please, because, okay. Now, the, so description starts with the description of Sarayu River, and you see how he is a poet. Now, whatever words he use, you have to explain what is the meaning, this is the problem, this whatever he expect. He says, “Sarayu is like Krishna stealing clothes from the Gopis in the monsoon.” So, this is the one sentence, okay? But the perpott explanation, shall is like this big, twenty-five sentences to explain this, okay? What is the meaning? He says, that Krishna steals clothes from the Gopis, you know? How Sarayu is compared to Krishna, who is stealing clothes from the Gopis? Then they quote the Prigweda, which describes that when earth is cultivated, mother earth, when it’s cultivated, when crop is growing, when you look from the sky, now we can see from the sky, from the earth, looks like its dress is covered, okay? When cultivated land is there, light of Bhagavatam, then again to Shiva Bhagavatam, say same thing, that mother earth changes dresses according to season, you know? So, those dress, when rainy season come, Sarayu river flooded everything around, so it stolen all their garments, everything was flooded, nothing is visible, you know? So, he say, she is, Sarayu is like Krishna stealing the garments from the Gopis. So, there is all, you know, the way how he says like that, it’s amazing. He says, that description of Ayodhya, he gives, city of Ayodhya, so beautiful, he was on explaining shloka after shloka giving beautiful, a description of Ayodhya. And then he says like this, that sun and the moon have given up their sleep, they’re going all the time circling around. Why they are circle, what is the purpose? They’re going all around the universe searching, is there any city even close to resemble Ayodhya? Otherwise, why they are going around? There’s no meaning when going around, that’s the meaning. Why sun is rising, why moon is rising, why they are setting, they’re going around searching for city, anything to resemble even Ayodhya, this is how they described, you know? So, it’s really nice when you read, it’s really mind-blowing. And every shloka is like this, there is no shlokas plain, how say a plain shloka, there nothing like that exists with Kamba, you know? See, it’s really great poet. So, he goes on like this describing, the sunrise, in summer time, in tropical country like this, I don’t know, sometimes you have part of year, when sun becomes red, red, red color, in the morning, everything becomes red, you know? So, he sees the sunrise in Ayodhya, he says like this, “Oh, the, everything is red.” What is it? The Lord Nasingadhe, who is the light of all lights, killed the darkness of Hirana Karchu. So, that is for him, the description of the sunrise, the dark night is over, now everything is red, Nasingadhe killed Hirana Karchu, now the light will come. So, you see how he compares, and this is devotee, he uses this type of analogy, you know? And if you hear it in Tamil, you know, if you ask few devotees to translate, everybody has his own flavor of translation, it’s difficult to tap, it’s difficult to say, you know? But even this looks nice. So, now after hearing this, many devotees, I spoke this long time ago, you know? So, some devotees, they tell me, “Hey, everything, I see this red, red sign, remember all, it’s Nasingadhe who killed the friend.” So, it stays, it stacks in your mind, that’s the point, that’s the purpose of it. The purpose is to always, always, always remember Krishna, Ram, Krishna, never forget it, whatever we see, should remind us on Krishna, that’s the, that is the purpose of this. And you want beautiful poetry, you want love story, you want fighting, you want politics, Mahabharata Ramayana will satisfy any intellectual person, emotional person, anybody, it’s so attractive, and it’s purifying, it’s not mundane story. So, like that, Valmiki goes on like that. The high walls of Ayodhya are golden, made of solid gold, they’re so high, they are reaching the heavenly planets, okay? Why they are so high, why they are going to heavenly planets? Just to see, just to check, the rumors that the ladies in heavenly planets are more beautiful than ladies in Ayodhya, but they sing, it’s not true. So, you see how in the sky to the city, you know, nobody would expect this, you know? So, see high walls, how much high, to Swarga Loka, yeah, they’re just checking whether is anybody more beautiful than ladies in Ayodhya, and it’s not there, you know? And then he goes on second shloka after that, therefore, Swarga Loka is called Swarga Loka. Why? Swarga means also a virgin or golden. Why? Just reflection of walls of Ayodhya highlighting Swarga, so Swarga became famous. So, he really doesn’t give any credit to Swarga Loka, you know? So, you know, it’s focus on Ram, this Ram factor, who are the devatas for Ram, you know, it’s like, you know, really, everything is in the same mode, it’s very devotional. Okay, so anyway, long story, long story, like this, we can go, and read some, some, show me some differences between Valmiki and Kamba, okay? Okay, Dasa, Dasa performs, Yaga and Ram appears, Lakshman appears, Bharat Sherukha, and Chaitra is there, and then, let’s come to the point that Vishamitra takes them around, okay? And they are coming to, to the king of Janakamalraj, okay? So, now, king receives them, Vishamitra, Lakshman and Ram, okay, they are young, young, youth, blooming youth, and, yeah, okay, great, thank you very much. So, now, yeah, okay, so, now this is where it’s interesting, they come to the, no, this is too much destruction, you stop it, you leave it, just stop, we will run, stop, it’s just everybody’s head goes there somewhere, you know, we are not able to do this, doesn’t matter. Yeah, I’ll show later, this, you have to give me this side, and you’ll take the side, thank you. All right, okay. So, look at this, the Valmiki described like this, that Vishamitra and Lakshman and Ram, they all came to Mittila, king received them, and give them one place in palace to sleep. So, Valmiki says like this, “Two of them, and the two of them felt that their beds are, why you are doing this, stop it, you know? It is need little attention, if you’re going to miss the poetry.” Okay, put the lights on, please, I’m not showing lights now, I’ll show later, please, thank you so much, very kind of you. All right, focus, I could argue on the, now focus attention one point, that is you’re going to miss, you know? No fun, you came then for nothing, you know? Here’s something, it’s really interesting. Valmiki says like this, that Vishamitra, Lakshman and Ram came to Mittila, and king received them, and give them place to sleep. And Valmiki says one line, “For two of them, beds were very comfortable,” and that’s all. He goes on narrating the story. So, what you would think, what that means? Of course, two of them, men, Lakshman and Ram, those were comfortable. But Kamba said, “No, for two of them, Valmiki clearly said, two of them were comfortable, why that one was not comfortable?” It was meaning on, that Vishamitra was not comfortable, he’s great sage, first of all, he doesn’t sleep at all. Second, white bed would not be comfortable, why he would feel uncomfortable, he would never complain. This means, it’s very clearly indicated, that Vishamitra and Lakshman slept nicely, Ram could not sleep, because on the way to Ayodhya, he’s so simile already. So, he had doubt, exists the author of King Janaka, which are going to win in competition or not, if there’s some other lady, a big problem here, so there is no sleep all night. So, you see Kamba, you understand? So, Kamba is going to bring this poetical thing, but the kavyas, what they discuss, they discuss loving exchanges between Lord and devotee. And what is the loving jet, Madhurya Rasa? Madhurya Rasa, he brings Vitralamba, loving separation, and Kamba brings this loving separation, which is described by Chetiyampru, the highest, Kamba brings it, thousands of shlokas in Kambaramayana just about it, heavy sense, a heavy tension. And this is mind-blowing, this is, Valmiki just covers it up, Valmiki knew what was happening, but he didn’t speak about it.[1635.63] And he was honest, truthful, he said, "Two of them were sleeping nicely, now you figure out who are the two." So if you don't know, you don't know, simply read, okay? Nothing, what is that, past tense, slept overnight, there is big past tense that happening. Because on the way entering Ayodhya, Sita appeared on the top of the terrace, saw the Ram, and Ram saw the Sita. They don't know who is this, she doesn't know who is this, he doesn't know who is her. But this is eternal associate, this is eternal husband and wife, huh? Yeah, yeah, people call you an active person, you say eternal husband and wife, but, this is sad, the, the, their love is eternal. So when moment comes in the Lila, when they actually first time meet, apparently, in the Lila, the attraction is overwhelming. So now Kamba describes Sita, what happened? After hearing Valmiki's statement that two of them were sleeping nicely, he has to explain what happened to Ram. Then he explained what happened to Sita. Sita just came terrace, saw somebody and became fully attracted. And she got frightened also, oh, you know, tomorrow is competition. And if this boy, whoever he is, doesn't win, I gonna die. And he said, and he, fever took her over. What is that fever of Sita, saw, saw the Ram and he disappeared, big problem. So, so, um, you can't explain, it's very difficult to explain this. It's ocean of milk, and there was churning of the ocean. What is the first thing came out? Are we reading? Yes. First came, poison, what is the color of the poison?
Blue.
Dark color, blue. Buddha milkanda, milkanda became on Shiva when he drank it. So, but poison was dark blue, actually black color, Kalakata poison, okay? So, um, Kamba describes that when, when, uh, when, uh, Sita saw Ram, Ram image, became color of her eyes. In the wild eyes, something black came, like a poison burning her body. Because it's love, it's not bad, nothing bad with attraction, you know? He said, "This, this, this prince, whoever was there, like a thief, entered through my eyes into my heart and stolen my feelings." Look at the expression of Kamba, goes on, and he doesn't stop, goes on, one after another, one after another, one after. So the servants, maid servants prepared flower bed for Sita. And now she has a fever, she's burning, she saw the Ram. And she's in tension, if somebody else win me tomorrow, what will happen? And she looks at the moon and say, "You're supposed to be cooling, my body is burning, what's wrong with you?" And she lays down on the bed of the flowers and they dry up in a second, all the petals become dry and start making noise. And the servants are in panic, something is wrong, something is wrong, something is wrong, you know? So they know the symptoms, they understood the symptoms. So there is the rumor. In the meantime, the, she doesn't sleep, Ram doesn't sleep at night, okay? The morning is competition, you know? Wants to tire, oh. And both breaks, and this is, she was born, you know, it's a big story about it, you know? So sound comes, boom. Kamba says, "Sound was heard in Ayodhya." This is, Kamba really, just he uses every opportunity to express it really nicely. And he says, "Now," King Janak said, "Great, bring the Sita, I'll give it to the prince of Ayodhya." So she is now dead panic. This is, that's it, if he's not him, I'm going to die. And if I die, my father will die, if my father die, my mother, everybody will die. It's a big problem, so I have because of everyone's death, but what can I do, how can I keep life? Now they addressing her up. Now the maid servants, they saw the Sita. Um, now the beauty of Sita is described. And he said that, um, Brahma made the moon after he saw face of the Sita. According to that, he made, so he's very bright complexion, shining, she's beautiful. Then he described the hair like a cloud, and this, it's all description. And then he said that the maid servants dressing her, bathing her and then dressing her, they, they, when they blink their eyes, they are, they are disturbed by that. That for the moment, they can appreciate Sita's beauty, that eyelids are disturbing. They are really upset, that, oh, why my eyes are blinking? There's so much pleasure just by seeing her, for the ladies. Maid servants are seeing her and finding, please sing her good. And then Valmiki said, Kamba said, they started putting garments on her and ornaments. And he's saying, ornaments became like uneducated people in the company of the pundits. Now what does it mean? Even uneducated man, when he walks with seven, eight pundits around, his prestige is up. Although he doesn't really know this stuff. So he said, ornaments became beautiful, and they are put on the Sita body, not the Sita became beautiful because of ornaments. He said, just like an uneducated man in company of pundits, ornaments also start shining on her body, you know, like became beautiful. Completely opposite, you know? We think how we put ornaments, I look more beautiful, but then he, then Kamba goes next Shlokka, and kind of upset. They're putting so much ornaments on her, they're concealing her beauty. It's not to be seen now. And this is what it is, she's going public, full cover, nothing. Not even Surya can have dharshan of any part of her body, everything is covered. And Kamba is upset, you know, oh, this is concealing, what happened? This supposed to do opposite, you know? So now they carrying Sita in Balgiv, covered fully with flowers, there is a flowers table, okay? And they bring her to the stage and then make her sit next to Ram. Now this is public, everyone is there, Rishi is at there, devatas are there, king is there, you know? And Ram is sitting few feet away, she can't look. And there is also flowers table. Now this is the peak of tension. She's thinking, is that him or not, is the same person or not? And she can't move, there is no way in public princess of Metilla, there's no way that she, you know, looking around, you know? Like American girls, you know? Doesn't work like that, it's a high culture, the highest culture. So she is sober, she's there, but she is burning, she can't, it's so difficult, so disturbing. For Ram, same thing. He say, "What do I tell to the prince, how can I say no, how can I say yes?" So two of them are sitting next to each other, do not know, that is this the same person or not? It's a highest tension, heavy, he sets up the tension, it's no drama like this, you know? That's really, and this goes on, Shlokka, he takes time, he described, he doesn't, you know? He doesn't think, oh, so many Shlokas, how big book will be, it just really goes on describing. And then one second, there is some part of ceremony when, you know, the little, little flowers are moved, she looked, and he looked, and goes, then the news spread to Ayodhya, so the marriage party. Then Kamba describes fifty pages, marriage party. I thought, as Brahmacharya, you know, that's a little bit too much. But he's setting the scene, he's setting the scene, what will happen, and it's amazing, it's difficult to explain. Anyway, the party's hobby is the party. When party reach Metilla, the tale was still in Ayodhya. And the biggest marriage party, you know, so, something like that, so there is no end, okay, okay. Ramayan. What a, what a crazy idea to make Ramayan. Yeah. Uh, so anyway, we came to the marriage, you know? There's so many Shlokas, it's very difficult to explain.
How many Shlokas this had?
Um, I don't know.
Twenty-four thousand, so this really.
Yeah, 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 so we'll not work all over, but we should, you know, better to go through it. Okay, so anyway, when Dasarad sits Sita, he sees for first time Sita and Ram together. He say, "Oh, they're looking just like Lakshmi Narayan." But Narayan has two wives. So I want to give also to, actually, he didn't say that, but it's implicated, that, oh, they're just like Lakshmi Narayan. And everybody knows that Narayan has a, she live in Bhuvan for the wife. So Bhuvan is mother earth. So King Dasarad, by that description, expressed his desire, "I'm going to give kingdom to Ram." Because he should have two wives, he should have kingdom and the Sita. So they, you know, so this is like this, it's, everything is like this, nothing is straight. Everything is double, triple, quadruple meanings, you know? And it's really nicely expressed. All right, so, uh, it, it's, um, okay, better we don't start, it's really difficult, people not hit, you know, that's a problem, you know? What do we do? Um, very emotional, very, very, um, the love of separation of Ram and Sita is mind blowing. And when, when they are in forest and everything is explained very politically, it's very beautiful. If you get opportunity, you can read some kind of version of it. Uh, yeah, I'm on page two of thirty-two pages of short summaries notes. So what do we do? Everything is extraordinary. Yeah.
Keep going.
Keep going. I think we're going reverse. Uh, difficult, this is very difficult to explain everything. But you got some feeling, you got some idea, you know, it's really, it's different, it's, it's really hyper, it's really absorbing. Okay, Dasarad, um, so the way he describes everything, he say that, um, hmm, you can't start, it's complex, it becomes very long to explain anything. Okay, I'll show you something else, since we have a chapter, I'll show you few slides, give you some idea of Ramayana. All right, I hope this will work now. Mm-hmm, how are you doing? It's coming. Can we get it real again? And the three.
A little closer picture, that will help. If you can move in a little bit this side.
Oh, I can move, yeah, for sure. Thank you. Ready?
Yep. Probably, probably I think it disconnected from there.
Sorry. Fantastic. Shri Ram, no. I need the cap. Okay, everything is something. It's weak from that. Are you getting something? We did earlier. Yeah. Okay, okay, just show you something, the Ramayana's influence. Um, okay, here, the Ramayana says itself, "The story of Ramayana will be popular among people so long as the mountains stand on the earth and the earth swirl." So means it will be eternally present, and it has to be present. I tell you, you can't, you can't get good man today without hearing Ramayana or Mahabharata. You cannot mold the character of the person in today's world. Modern education, I tell you, our kids are getting means of earning money, but they are not getting good character. Actually, they get spoiled in the colleges, in the hostels, in the schools. They're getting poisoned by the modern, realistic philosophy and realistic way of life. You can't get good man, you cannot get good quality person unless he hears Ramayana or Mahabharata. This is, just, doesn't work. Modern society fails to produce good quality man. And this is your duty as a parent, as a mother, as a father, teach them home. They're not going to get it in the school, they're not going to get it on internet, they're not going to get it even in their PhD. You know, PhD, permanent head damage. Ramayana, okay, how many Ramayanas? This is Kamba Ramayana in Tamil. This is in Bengali Ramayana, this is Ramshri Ramayanas, this is Malayalam Ramayana, Ananda Ramayana, Adgurtha Ramayana, many, many Ram, just Ram, Lila is going on. But, look at this, this is in Laos, Laos version of Ramayana, you know where is Laos? Yeah. Cambodia, Vietnam, China, other side, okay? They have also Ramayana in their culture, very prominent, very popular. Okay, here is the Indonesian version of Ramayana, okay? Then you have Thai version of Ramayana. Okay, then you have Burma or Burma's version of Ramayana. All this country, Thailand, they perform Ramayana, every big ceremony, government's around, king is there. When he has a function in the court, Ramayana is played. Look at this, costumes beautiful, look at this golden deer. You see that? You see the golden deer on the ground? Hanuman, isn't Thai version? The story is same, look at this, Ram is in chariot, Lakshman is there, monkeys are around, see their faces. See this? And demons other side. This is in Bangkok airport, churning ocean, I mean, Lila. Kurma Vatar and Devatas Asura's churning and Ajitah, Supreme Lord with many hands. But in the Sumaila mountain, this is Indonesian Ramayana. Golden deer, see the horns. Same story, narrated again and again and again, all over the place, so famous. This is Jatao. And Indonesia, you know, it's a Muslim country?
Yes.
Okay, you see what I say, look at the statement, declaration, public declaration for them. Islam is our religion, Ramayana is our culture. Public newspaper, it's big title in the newspaper, this is what they declare. We follow Islam, but, but we are actually, what we learn about life, that is from Ramayana. Just see this, they don't shy away from that, you know? Bali, Sita Ram, Burma, Burma, Laos, look at the masks, Ajitah, you know? Almost Chinese looking, you know? All this country, Vietnam, they have also, Ramayana, Ram, Lila, Ram dramas, and all over the place, you know? Cambodia. So, like that. So anyway, this is, this is how Ramayana finishes. Ram asks, "Where shall I live? Where do I go?" After everything is over. So for you, the house where you can live with happiness is the heart of those who are content, tolerant, who do not have any health, any pains, or peace, who are always, who always change your name. That's the answer. By the great Rishi. "A lot of Sita, you're living in the mind of those whose mind has become firm by constant practice. Who are always interested in selling your feet, who are always interested in changing your name, who are happy and rich with great devotion." There you reside, Ram. So then there is a beautiful story of Kulashakal Alwar. You heard that, you know that, it's a very famous story. He was also a great devotee of Ram and hearing Ram Lila. He lived many years after Ram. He lived, hours, maybe thousand years?
I believe Kulashakal is a pre-Kali.
So more than five thousand years, but still, far, far, far after Ram, Ramayana has spoken. Ramayana happened. So what happened, he was daily, daily hearing Ramayana, and the pundit in the court, Kani, daily narrating Ramayana to him. And he was very emotional, he was very devoted. So what happened is that he would get so absorbed that the pundit has to be very careful not to overdose. He has to control emotions, same thing they did, Swarup Damadar and, um, Ramanandaray, to Chaitanya Mahaprabhu in Puri. When Chaitanya Mahaprabhu shows great emotion of love of God and loving separation, they would change the Shlokas and control that kind of, hmm, balance it, that he doesn't go completely unconscious that the festival could be performed, it's very delicate thing. So one day, it was sick, he sent his son to the Dallas of the king to narrate Ramayana to Kulashakal Alwar. And his son was little inexperienced, so he overdosed it. So he was narrating the story, then Ravana kidnapped Sita. And king said, "How can Ravana kidnap Sita? Tulak is false, bring the army, we are going to Lanka to kill Ravana." So now the evil, but your ministers said, you know, that was in Thayuga, so one of them, you know, panicked, but king is completely living it, is completely all when will. Ooh, he's a great king, and he's a great Vaishnava, how do we do, what do we do? Bring the army, so they brought the army, they went on marching towards Lanka. They came to the bank of the ocean, and you say, "Follow me and start going into the ocean." So the old ministers army said, "That's it, they went mad, they said, 'We are gone, there's no way, it's a big war.'" If they know the king is gone, mad, then others will attack us, big commotion among ministers, you know? So Kulashakal just goes inside of the ocean and goes under the water, disappears. And everybody thinks it's over, everything is gone. And what happens next moment? Comes back, Ram holds him on his hand, brings him up, Ram on his hand. So these are the great devotees, this happened many, many years after Ram Lila. So Ram Lila is real, that feelings are real. And this poetry, this Ramayana, of those feelings for Ram, extremely intense and really help us to direct our emotion to Krishna, to Ram, to the spiritual. Everyone of us have feelings, because everybody has to love somebody and you have to do something. Then you cannot stop, so if you don't love Krishna, you don't like, you don't love God, then you love your dog. You have to love. You have to love someone, you can't be deprived, nobody is bamboo, nobody is dead metal. You know, but that feeling can be generalized, can be directed towards Supreme Lord. So that was the message. Anyway, there are many, many more slides, but we'll skip a little bit. And I may be one, we'll show the last one, just to do a little post. This is famous, of India Vishnu Sahasranam introduction. Durga speaks to Durga. See, what happened is that when Vishwan narrated Vishnu Sahasranam, all Devatas were there. So when Vishwan went to glorifying that thousand things of Vishnu, he chant it, nothing is had, Brahma goes, nothing is had. So Durga in one moment turned to Shiva and said, you have nothing in your head, are you chanting Vishnu Sahasranam? And he said, no. But you have nothing in your head, yes? What are you reading? Rama, Rama, Rama Eti, Rama, Rama, Mano Rama. Sahasranam is to Ram, Rama, Rama, Varanam. I chant Ram Nam and my mind is Mano Ram. Sahasranam is to Ram, but chanting thousands of Vishnu, Ram Nam, Varanam, same punya, Ram is chanting one time Ram. Who says? Shiva says. Okay, Padmapura, Shlokam, Durga Shiva speaks. Then she turned to Brahma and said, Lord Brahma, you also have nothing in your head, you also chanting Ram Nam, you know? I chant Krishna Nam. How is Shlokam goes? Yeah, Tira Rita to Yat Phalam, Ekav Rita to Krishnaaya. He says that Sahasranam is Shishaaya. I forgot one line, call you a brain, I'm not Shlokam, I don't know. Tira Rita to Yat Phalam, Tira Rita, three time phalam, Ekav Rita to Krishnaaya. But one time telling Krishna Nam, I got three time phalam Sahasranam I chant. You heard that? And before that, there was another Shlokas saying, Agatsya Savita was told that. It says Sarveshu Mantra Vargesh. Sreshtham Vaishnavam Uchchutte. Of all types of mantra described by Vargesh. Sayestam, the best, Vaishnavam, Vaishnavam. Ganapatiyeshu, Durgaeshu, Suryeshu, Shivaeshu, Abhishtala. Better than Shiva mantras, better than Durga mantras, better than Ganapati pathas, better than Surya mantras or Vaishna mantras. Vishnu name. And then Vishwan speaks Vishnu Sahasranam. And then Shiva says, more punya by chanting Vishnu Sahasranam, chanting Ram Nam, and then Ram says, Krishna Nam, three phalam. So when we chant Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. We chant that how many times Vishnu Sahasranam, Ram? Hare Krishna, Krishna means three times Vishnu Sahasranam. Hare Krishna, six times. Krishna, Krishna, twelve times. Hare, Hare, Hare Rama, one time, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen times. It's not half a punya, sixteen times chanting Vishnu Sahasranam. Chant Sahasranam, forty-five minutes. If you are really fast, maybe twenty-five minutes, if you are super fast. But usually, if you sing it, you know? Just see the power, just see the potency. So Shasas giving us, Shadas giving us a real mantra, real power, so we are all under proper guidance of Shilpa Prabhupada, we all sheltered, we all have good, good. Facilities to absorb ourselves in Krishna, in devotion service, in remembering. Sabhatam Smarthayavishnu, Vismarthayavishnu, remember Vishnu, never forget him. So we all facilities take advantage, whether we are in desert or we are in the moon, doesn't matter. That is that we remember Krishna and these all interactions, Ramayana, Mahabharata, Bhagavat Mitha, Bhagavatam, Bhagavatam. Ocean. So that all helps us to develop devotion. Thank you very much for coming, Hare Krishna. Okay, okay, don't move. Two minutes, I'll show you a little bit. You know, we are building temple in Salem, we are building stone temple and we are doing a little bit of temple complex. Shall we do? Right, okay. Oh, all right, oh, you have those in your Shri Ram. Please, help to... Okay, I just, you know, you've seen the, everything of temple complex, I'll not repeat that one, no? Everybody seen, yes?
Yes.
How many of you have not seen? Sure fast.
Oh. Oh, so, thirty percent. Okay, super fast, super fast, I'll show you from the sky on there. Yeah, I'm sure. Okay, so what we are doing actually, we are building a stone temple in Salem. Full stone temple with local granite. This is around four and a half acres of land. Here we have. And we have main temple for Radha Krishna. Full stone, two fifty feet length, hundred eight feet height. Solid, no bricks, no cement, no iron, no cladding work, it is just granite blocks assembled together. You know, so may last for thousands of years. We are in Tamil Nadu, every village has bigger temple than this, don't worry. Come and see Tamil Nadu, they have the biggest temples in the world. And the South Indian kings build Angkor Wat, which is a temple in Cambodia. So, yeah, so we, here we have huge kitchen, firewood kitchen with again enormous prasad on the first floor and the second floor. We can serve thousand six hundred people in one bench, which is, which is nothing because Jamashin had already more than one lack of people, so that means, how many benches? Hundred benches. It's difficult. Uh, here we have the Sita Kalyanam Mandapam, and I'll show you little bit details of that. Where we are doing beautiful Ram Lila caroms. And we have a guest house for live members, we have proper memorial hall and very library and Shaslik Research and Protection Center. We go preaching Tamil Nadu, we come to the village, we go to the temple, we find palm leaf manuscript eaten by termites, neglected, dropped, you know? Some of the things in this we are preserving, we are little bit working on that. Uh, we have a sankitan hall and youth preaching. And we have a gurukul also. A gurukul, we have goshada, we have garden, palm. So this is what's happening in Salem, we have tons of garrets. We have all Bhagavatam carved in the pink sandstone, six hundred feet of corridors carved in, in the pink stone. Just show you a little bit of that. Yeah, it's a, it's a attempt to preserve the culture. This is marble, marble matatan for Radha Krishna, six tons of white marble. Again, no iron, no concrete, nothing, just solid, solid stuff. Yeah, we have a twenty-eight copies showing different mudras in relation to Krishna, Dasiya, Rasa, Sakya, Vatsalya, Adhurtha, Vira, Bayanaka, Vipassah, like that. These are carved marble. And this had, uh, this had mozzarella cheese. This is quite the height, thirty-five, forty tons each block. Somebody would joke, it looked like mozzarella, yes? Yeah, doesn't melt, doesn't melt on the heat. So, yeah, it's a solid temple, solid, solid construction. I'll just speed up a little bit not to bother you much with the technicality of the project, but just show you a little bit of the beauty. Stone, 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 yeah, these are the pink sandstone carvings of Bhagavatam Lillas. This is seven fifty kilos one piece, hundred and eight pieces are there. And the big tall Bhagavatam from first center to the ten, ten to six hundred feet running around corridor. Below each Lila, your QR code, you can come with phone, scan it and hear in Tamil, English, Hindi, you can hear the story. Find half hours if you want to hear everything. And then you get hungry, then go take prasadam, you get tired, you're still sleeping guest house, so like that. And then when you get convinced, we have a barber shop also. Full package, it's a family package.
But only one hairstyler, barber.
But this is eternal fashion, you know? Can you see one side, it's already difficult, you see the corridors, solid pillars, down in stone. This is floating, it's not this floating, it's the, this is dangerous of stone. This is not tiles, no ceramics, just solid rocks everywhere. It's a traditional style, nothing new, every village has bigger temple than us in Tamil Nadu, don't worry. Yeah, this is the Kalyanam Mandapam, we are building Sita Kalyanam Mandapam. Now it's rough a little bit, position, but I'll show you. Yeah, I have these carvings inside, using the sense on the carvings. This is King Dasarad with four boys, can you see? There's small thing, huh? Maybe I'll show there, huh? Is that in the... Yeah, it's open, where is your? That's the latest one. Yesterday, so to... Okay, here. All right, show you a little bit how this works. Oops. Okay, now you see this, this is the painting we given for them to carve and then they carving stone. It's a very small thing, hardly you can see anything, correct? Uh, get some idea how it's carved.